Count me down, C. Count me down. Good evening. As Vice Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the February 20th, 2024 regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. The management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken this time to join us. We are very proud of this school system and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now, this will be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 20 de febrero del 2024. Damos una calidad bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen que se haya unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como junta de educación de Hartford estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo estatal de para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de ese sistema escolar y le damos las gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you, Superintendent. We'll now move on to public comment, and we're going to ask Board Member Uzama to read public comment for us.
We, as a Board, in collaboration with the Superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we will take your concerns seriously, and to that end, staff will follow up within 48 hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being, adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y el personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos que se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las 48 horas si fuera necesario, a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento. Las personas, les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando hayan pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará, dejándoles saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, le pedimos que termine sus comentarios. Gracias.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Jennifer Wilder.
Good evening, Board members. Jennifer Wilder, I am an alum of Hartford Public High School as well as a current parent of a junior at Hartford Public High School, a part of Faces and SGC. So, I'm trying to lean in as an alumni and a past grad, well, a current parent. And so, there are three things that I wanted to address really quickly. It's pre-K curriculum, budget, and then parent engagement. And so, pre-K curriculum, my ex-husband, we co-parent awesomely, I think, has a soon-to-be three-year-old who's leaning into pre-K options in the district. And so, I had the Friday available, and kudos to the pre-K curriculum director for putting on an opportunity for parents to lean in and see the three options for pre-K curriculum for next year. I was sad to see that I was the only parent that was there, and I don't even have like a baby that I birthed, although one is a part of my life. I asked afterwards how she planned to get further engagement from parents, and there wasn't a real plan for that. So, that was a little disappointing. So, I wanted to lean into the Board and let you guys know that there is opportunity. There is like 1,200 kids in pre-K, some of which are in pre-K 3. And so, at the least, the pre-K 3 parents should be surveyed in some way, shape, or form, and informed of what the curriculum could be, so that they can get some input into what they want for their children next year. That was one thing. The budget approval process as SGC Chair, I'll say again, feels real checkbox-ish at that point where I have to send an email back to my house principal to let her know that like I either agree or don't agree with a budget that I see but don't see because I have access to it, but it doesn't really give a breakdown unless I took the time to go through and see all the salaries and the roles and counted up the number of people in the different types of roles to see if we have capacity in the various subject areas and things of that nature. So, it's a very daunting task for a parent to be able to like lean into it fully. And so, I think the Board should think about the approach to that. Fifty-four seconds, I'm getting there. And then, parent engagement, that leads to parent engagement, right? So, concept of parent responsiveness versus parent engagement. So, I really, really want the Board. Shout-out to Nishet, I see you in the audience, and she does an amazing job leaning into parent leadership with the rest of her team and allowing for us a space to weigh in on how we feel. But then, that's at the Board level, at the district level. When we get back to our buildings, it's a very different picture. And I think at the comprehensive, we have to look at it very differently because leaning into parents of students that are about to graduate and become adults feels different for not only the administration but also the teachers, also the parents. And so, I think we should take a little bit of time and think about how we structure and think about parent engagement for parents that have students in the comprehensive schools. Ooh, and I made it.
Carol Gale.
Good evening, members of the Board of Ed, Superintendent of Schools. My name is Carol Gale. I am a Hartford native, a Hartford resident, a Hartford taxpayer, and the president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. Tonight's agenda includes a report that has in it a grading guidance document. There's no page numbers, but it's in this report on post-secondary success. And it states that the use of the minimum 50 as an F grade is for all marking periods except the final marking period. That's a quote from that policy. This has unfortunately been a policy in Hartford for many years, which is detrimental to our students. I urge you to direct the Superintendent to effect a change in that policy for the following reasons. Students can earn a grade of 50 for doing little or nothing. This creates a contradictory work ethic. This policy places ethical dilemmas on teachers who must overwrite final grades with a score of 50 that differs from the actual score that the student earned. This policy has caused tensions between teachers and administrators over changing grades. This policy allows students to pass courses when they have not actually learned the material or skills, thereby ill-preparing them for post-graduation success. And this policy perpetuates the soft bigotry of low expectations. There are other methods for supporting students to pass courses and earn graduation credits, which we fully support. These would include things such as maintaining high expectations, academic detentions, academic probations, Saturday academies, tutoring, extra help, et cetera. The second point that I'm going to raise this evening is a follow-up on my comments that actually were from August of this year. At that time, I spoke about the vision of the Hartford Federation of Teachers Executive Board to work collaboratively with the district towards a goal of quality education for every Hartford student, and that we sought to handle problems at the lowest level and only resort to using the grievance process after all other avenues proved unsuccessful. I then provided data on our grievance filings. In our first two years of office, we had under 10 grievances each. In our third year of office, we had 30 grievances. I concluded my remarks in August with a renewed call for collaboration with the district, posing the question as to whether this school year would be a year of more collaboration or a continued trend of more grievances. If in August, you did not take that as a call to direct the district towards greater collaboration with the HFT, I urge you to do so tonight. So far this year, we are at 38 grievances. I will let that data speak for itself. Thank you.
Michael Downs.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent. My name is Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford, Connecticut. And I'd like to speak on, reiterate what I spoke about last month, that we have to keep our eye on the ball, and that is the $77 million shortfall for this coming year. And it's up to the members of the Board, union leaders, city council, central office leaders, concerned citizens, and the mayor. We keep that young man's feet to the fire on this issue. And because, as I've said before, it affects housing, food security, poverty issues, extracurricular activities, necessary support teachers, and for the inner-city neighborhood schools. And these have been successful, and the students are still suffering from the effects of the pandemic. And the second thing I wanted to address was wish school. My neighbors are starting to say, looking for shovels on the ground. I mean, it's about time that the design has been completed. There is a design oversight committee that I met once and could meet again, but it should be a final meeting over a final design. And shovels should be on the ground this spring. Thank you.
Giselle Feliciano.
Good evening. It's been over 20 years since I've been in front of the Board of Ed, but here I am. Good evening, Board members. Superintendent Leslie Torres, I'm here this evening as a Hartford resident, but most importantly, as a grandmother of a pre-K student that attends Environmental Mary Hooker School. Let's start off with, I feel the cutoff date for pre-K students leaves many parents with unanswered questions. My hope is that the Board, along with the teachers' union and the legislators, makes the desire plan that will work in uniform to benefit the children this law will affect. I would like to have clear options to this law with the request of parents asking to move children to kindergarten, especially those children with special education needs. Main reason why I'm here. It is already difficult time to get the school to understand that as a parent, that we employ the school to provide the tools that we know they need. This leads me to my concerns with Environmental Mary Hooker School. I, along with the parents of my grandchildren, have since day one chose Environmental School due to the magnet curriculum to provide the tools that my grandchildren need. They are also, or were also, a blue-ribbon school. I have noticed an increase in parents' concerns about the way teachers have left the school. It is my understanding at the higher school levels, six-plus teachers have left the school along with one social worker to deal with the entire school population. This decline in the teachers has affected the younger classes as the school is forced to find classrooms to house the older children. The transferring of students affects my grandchild, as they are normally housed within pre-K schools or classrooms, excuse me. If you have no order with the leadership, principal, it reflects within the environment of the students and staff. This trickles down to the need that all children need to progress, not only in education, but also with their social and life skills. I am here to inform the Board of Education of these concerns and the urgent message that you must act now to secure the well-being of all the students and staff alike. You must fill the positions and have the principal be concerned about consequences that occur with the lack of her leadership. I end by saying to the school system, along with the law, has already made many changes. Parents and children have adopted to that, but you will never see the positive changes if so-called leaders of our children cannot keep the environment, in an orderly fashion, a safe environment for all our children, including the staff. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Sarah McCoy.
Good evening, Board of Ed members. My name is Sarah McCoy. I'm a Hartford resident and proud parent to three Hartford Public School students, and I'm here today to advocate for my littlest one. She is a pre-K 3 student at Annie Fisher Montessori, where she is thriving. Before enrolling her at Annie Fisher, nearly a year ago, I asked the school administration if there was a plan for the recent statewide change that stated that kindergarten students needed to be five by September 1. Administrators didn't have an answer for me, but they assured me that the Montessori school operated differently as the classrooms are built with a three-year cycle in mind. We enrolled our daughter at the only Hartford Public School with this part-time pre-K 3 program and no after-school option with this assurance. My daughter's birthday is September 23rd, so she misses the cutoff by a couple weeks. Last month, I was relieved to get a phone call from the school stating that all pre-K students would have a full-day option in the fall, so not to worry. Today, I received word from a principal rescinding that offer. Pre-K 3 will continue to be part-day, and Ripley will be considered a pre-K student again. This decision is frustrating for me on so many levels. First, I asked about this literally a year ago. Had we received a different message, we would have kept her in daycare for another year. Secondly, the back-and-forth nature of this has created confusion and stress. Lastly, and by far most importantly, is that this is not what's in the best interest of my child. The Montessori pedagogy is built around the principle that it follows the student's lead. I am here tonight to ask the Board of Education and central office leadership to adjust this plan for next year to be a planning year for full-day pre-kindergarten students and grandfather in the students who are currently enrolled and are ready for full-day education. What better way to prep for this type of program shift than with a small group of learners accustomed to the space? Kindergarten students have a waiver option if the parents and teachers agree that the student is underage but ready. Could this be pursued for the pre-K 4 students as well? I am fortunate enough to have a flexible enough work schedule to leave during my lunch break every day and move my daughter from Annie Fisher to another provider, but it has been a huge disruption, and I recognize that most parents don't have this option. In fact, one of your current Board of Ed members wanted to send his son to the school but couldn't until the pre-K 4 and full-day education was possible. There are currently 43 pre-K students enrolled at Annie Fisher Montessori, and the new cutoff only impacts a third of them. If the statistics hold, we are talking about 14 kids. 14 kids at one school in the district. This is a solvable problem. Please meet the needs of your current families by adjusting the policies that will keep my daughter and others from truly growing and learning more next year.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you so much, and just want to thank everyone who came out to speak to us this evening. You are heard, and we will take the information and do what we can. So, thank you so much for coming. Before I start the report of the Chair, I just want to say Happy Black History Month to everyone and to all of the DNI members that work for us. Happy Black History Month to you all, the Deltas, the AKAs, a little bit of everybody. So, thank you, and Happy Black History Month to you. We'll now move on to the report of the Chair. And we can shout out the Haitians as well, ladi-dadi and everybody, okay? All right. We will now move on to the report of the Chair. I've recently received a few phone calls inquiring about ESER funding, and there has been a recent narrative in the press that Hartford Public Schools has over $60 million to spend and are behind schedule in the ability to invest the balance of the ESER money. So, I wanted to take a moment to clarify the current status of the ESER balance and the plan to ensure it is completely expanded for our students and staff. In total, Hartford Public Schools has been the recipient of over $152 million in ESER funding. That funding was planned for, based on state guidelines, and is divided into seven primary buckets. Expanded learning, like intercession that kicked off today. Teacher and school leader supports, like coaching and curriculum. Wellness supports, which includes engagement efforts and mental health. Teacher pipelines, like recruitment and retention efforts. School safety. School-based funding where leaders have flexibility in programming and technology. This Board was involved in the planning and has approved numerous contracts to ensure that the money is spent efficiently and in alignment with the grant guidelines. I'm happy to share the investment has been over $90 million so far. The $60 million remaining is either already pledged through existing contracts, is committed to payroll for 289 currently-staffed employees, or is already planned for. Over $20 million is dedicated to the continued payment of staff salaries, as we've hired 289 people with the funds. The remaining $40 million is committed to programs like summer school and intercession, one-time facilities and security improvements, student mental health and wellness supports, and staff professional development, as well as instructional materials. The Board and Superintendent will be very engaged in this legislative session. I'm going to say again, this Board and Superintendent will be very engaged in this legislative session and want to ensure that all members of our community are empowered with up-to-date, correct information. I encourage members of the community to reach out with questions about the budget process and implications from the legislative session. As a reminder, you can find the Superintendent's report, full committed reports, as well as attachments and videos, in the meeting's agenda on Board Docs. All committee and workshop meetings are live-streamed, as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting's agenda on Board Docs. I encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions or feedback, please contact Christina Santiago, our Board liaison, at csantiago@hartfordschools.org. We will now move on to the report of the Superintendent.
Thank you, and I appreciate you clarifying or giving the update. I will start with the legislative advocacy in my report. And yes, so on Thursday, the February 15th, I was a speaking participant in a press conference at the Legislative Office Building that focused on the impact of the governor's proposed budget and the impact it would have on K-12 education. During my time speaking, I was able to lift to the press and to the general audience that Hartford Public Schools could face an additional $11 million burden if the governor removed the general education magnet tuition cap on top of the significant cuts that we already are planning for to mitigate our deficit. I also submitted written testimony to the Appropriations Committee, speaking on some of these same points I expressed in the press conference. And I do want to just take a moment to express appreciation for the partnership of the Hartford delegation, the representatives and senators from across the state that were part of this press conference, our local and state union leaders, and all of the education advocates that are embarking on this mission together to advocate on behalf of our K-12 education and the resources and supports that our students need. I will also, to shift to another note, and is a congratulatory note, is to celebrate our middle school basketball champions. Congratulations to Annie Fisher STEM Montessori Girls Team and the McDonough Middle School Boys Team for winning the Hartford Public Schools Middle School Basketball Championships at the Basketball Hall of Fame in Springfield. All the teams displayed incredible sportsmanship and teamwork, and I hope that you all are as proud as I am because we really have worked over the years to make sure that we are able to offer district-wide middle school athletics as part of our effort to support the whole student with enriching activities. So, I want to thank the staff who've made this not only season a success, but everyone that has been a part of our expansion, inclusive of the Board of Education, given that our budget framework allowed for these investments several years ago. Also, you referenced Pastor AJ that intercession begins. And so, yes, intercession began today. This is an opportunity for students to engage in targeted academic recovery and meaningful enrichment activities as part of our... enrichment activities as part of our recovery plan. This is the last year of those intercession opportunities, and I do want to report that we had over three hundred students registered for intercession, and we had forty-three openings for staff and a hundred and sixteen applied. And I just want to thank the staff that is part of this work. I was with them, along with Dr. Ratley and Ms. Leonard, last week, Saturday, when they were there for the entire day, engaging in their own learning in order to be at their best, if you will, for intercession. So, gratitude to them, but also to our families and students who, right, are stepping up and making sure that they access this opportunity. And I think I'm going to end, Ms. Santiago, if you don't mind, with just an update on our chronic absenteeism. I don't know that I did this visually last time, and so, if we can go to our next slide, we see here that our, this is as of January 2024, our attendance continues to improve. The average daily attendance rate increased about one percentage point since last year this time, and the chronic absenteeism rate improved by two-and-a-half percentage points since last time, last year. When we look in our next slide across all grades, we notice that most grade levels improved rates by at least two percentage points. We see that kindergarten and grade eight students show the most improvement, reducing their chronic absenteeism cohort rate by more than five percentage points. We notice that, you know, school avoidance and challenges, other root-caused challenges are still at play for our ninth graders and our eleventh graders. And when we look across all schools in the next visual, we see that the number of schools with chronic absenteeism rates less than twenty-five percent increased from six schools to eleven schools in a year, and so, that's what we want. We want the number of schools with lower chronic absenteeism rates to increase. For the schools and even the grades that are still in need of support, you know, our district ACE team, along with Ms. Riets, will continue to meet weekly to get at those root causes for student absences, with illness still being actually on the top, the top of the trend mark, and they will work together to really strengthen their tiered support, especially those tier-three students, the ones that are having the most challenges with coming to school, in addition to providing additional incentives for quarter-three and quarter-four, so that we can end the year strong and continue to shift the habits for students to attend regularly and remove the barriers as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. We'll now move on to the business agenda. Oh, I am so sorry. I didn't forget about y'all. We'll now move on to the student representatives, who I'm just so proud to have up here, and we have the treasurer of our student representatives up here as well, who can introduce herself as she pleases. The floor is yours.
Hello, my name is Kiara Hill, and I am the treasurer of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council.
Hello, I'm Uzoma Chikora, and I'm the Vice President of the Student Advisory Council, and our full report will be available online, but we're just going to highlight the most important aspects. So, in our February eighth meeting, we discussed the issues within our schools that we noticed on a daily basis, and then Deputy Superintendent Paul Foster came in, and we learned about how money is divided up into schools, and we participated in an interactive budget simulation with our peers.
A few of the things that we discussed were through open discussion, and we were able to recognize that each high school is unique and has its own set of strengths and things to improve upon, and another small trend among our schools is a shortage of teachers, especially math teachers was the big thing, and some teachers had to work two jobs within their schools and sometimes even outside of their schools. And we also noticed that while schools have a few of a certain teacher, like a certain kind of teacher, other schools have an abundance of that kind of teacher that they don't necessarily need.
And we learned that once a school's budget is decided, it covers all the costs within the school, including teacher and staff pay, programs, buses, et cetera, and staff numbers are determined by the number of students. So, one thing that stood out to us was through our open discussion, since it's from students all across the district, many schools have opportunities and programs that other schools do not have, for example, internships, pathways, and AP courses.
We're going to move on to the pluses and deltas of the meeting. Some pluses were that everyone got the chance to share their main issues within their school and the district overall. We took a deeper dive into budget and gained a better understanding of how budget distribution within each school varies, and we all received insight on what certain schools are doing well and what other schools are lacking.
And our delta is because the ESAC is a total of over forty students, all from almost every high school across the district, many students' concerns were unique and specific to their own school, which kind of made it a little bit difficult to pinpoint a universal solution. So, we do have a first step that we're taking towards solving this, where we'll be creating a Google Form survey that will be sent out to all ESAC students, in which they will indicate the school they attend, and the survey is composed of a series of questions about their school and what their school provides, and this will allow us to just get a better understanding of each school's personal needs and will help us pinpoint trends across our schools. So, now we'll get into the main concerns that we heard at our meeting from students. One of the main concerns is, while discussing concerns as a group, one of the main things that came up was building cleanliness and janitorial staffing issues. Many students felt that the janitorial services in their schools were lacking, and they reported that many schools have facilities that aren't functional, including bathrooms without stall doors, broken toilets, sinks, soap dispensers, water fountains, and in some cases, walls, and many students were wondering if a portion of their school's budget could be put towards renovating these things. And although these are true, us as students also have to remember to upkeep our schools so that it can remain in good condition.
An idea that we've also been discussing as a group on the council was incorporating empathy and restorative practices into professional developments for teachers and staff. A lot of students voiced their concerns about a disconnect between staff and students that often creates tension within the learning environment and often disrupts the learning process, and a great way to diffuse tense situations is by using restorative practices or practices that focus more on repairing the relationship between those in conflict rather than giving punishment for causing said conflict. If just a small amount of time in professional development is put towards learning about restorative practices and how to incorporate them in the classroom, along with understanding the mental and emotional wellness of both teachers and students alike, I think, we all think that it would create a much calmer classroom for learning.
And lastly, a topic that came up was, we as students, we requested for our high schoolers to have a financial literacy and career exploration class, or a class that helps us explore our career interests with the support of a qualified adult. So, many of us, many, many high schools don't provide these classes, and although many high schools do provide the classes, to which we are grateful for, the students from the schools that do not provide it feel as though they are missing out on key preparation for their future. And we believe that these classes will help us students feel more comfortable taking the next steps and even feel excited in our career decisions. I believe that a financial literacy class is very necessary for us to integrate into society after high school. We don't know how to do our taxes, we don't know how a down payment works on a house or insurance for a car, and we just really believe that these are things that we need to know. And we understand that staffing is already a problem, but we feel as though this class is a necessity for all high school students who should feel confident in whichever path they choose to pursue after high school.
And lastly, just to summarize our report, the February eighth meeting went well. We just need to zero in on more district-wide trends rather than school-specific trends. This meeting in particular was a great outlet for students to voice their concerns with some students from other Hartford Public Schools, which helped us get a wider view of the district, and the main things that students are pushing for immediate improvement on are school repairs, incorporating restorative practices and empathy into professional development and career development classes and financial literacy classes.
And that concludes our report.
Can we collectively, thank you, thank you, can we collectively? Hartford has the best and the brightest, I tell you, I tell you. Thank you all so much for delivering that report, and I want to turn it over to the superintendent just for comments.
I just, I want to highlight a couple of things from what I heard when we were having the conversation on that day, and first, I am so proud of all of you. I also heard transportation as a pain point for students that are in magnets, or not, students in general, that they might want to engage in after-school activities, and they're not able to because they don't have access to the transportation. I did share that there were some students in one of our high schools, actually, that has taken that as their advocacy, and I did learn today, I believe, that there is a bill that is potentially going to be introduced, and so, more to come for our Student Advisory Council to actually take part in that advocacy at the legislature, because we heard loud and clear from students, they want to participate in after-school activities, but they're not able to. And we also heard some sharing of ideas as students were lifting or learning about the differences among schools. I did hear about, could, could teachers share, or could there be a teacher that supports two schools? And perhaps some students can join virtually. Some students felt, no, that is not something that would work for me, where other students said, hey, I might want to have access to an AP course, and I might be okay doing it virtually if we could share the teacher. So, I want to lift that, yes, while students were talking about challenges, they also were offering up solutions, and so, I just want to say, don't sell yourself short. You are not only talking about challenges, you also are informing our thinking as the potential solutions as well, so I just wanted to congratulate you on that.
Yes, Dr. Shmerlin.
When you went through the budget simulation, were you able to balance the budget, or do you have any suggestions for us and how we might do that? We can learn from you.
The budget simulation, it was mostly just like, they, they gave us like all of the teachers that are like required for a school and like all of the pays that the teachers get, and we were supposed to kind of like choose which teachers to keep and which to like let go of, and it was very hard because the budget was really tight, and there were a lot of teachers that we really wanted to include, but we just couldn't because the budget was low, so I'm not, I don't really have a definite solution to that, but as time goes on, I believe it could get better.
I think ultimately you will have a solution for us. Thank you for your activities.
Yeah, we're counting on that solution. If you can have it ready by April, that'll be great. We will now move on to the business agenda, and I'm going to propose a new motion that moves an agenda item up, so I move to take the agenda out of order and move item four-point three to the first item on the business agenda. Do I have, do I have a motion and do I have a second?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. Are we ready for the question? Question. All in favor of those to take, move up Agenda Item four-point three as the first item to take up this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? All right, ayes have it. I believe Board Member Walker has a hand up. The floor is yours, Board Member Walker.
Yeah, pardon me, Mr. Chair, I am just struggling to hear you a little bit, so I just want you to indulge me with reciting the motion and the just passed, and, or put it in chat so I can read it, but could you repeat that again one more time?
Yes, sir, no problem, and I apologize for the technical difficulties on Zoom, but we just took a motion, or just adopted a motion, to move Agenda Item four-point three up. To start with that agenda item, that was the motion that we just took, so we're just moving one item up to conduct that business and then move forward and proceed with our agenda as scheduled. Did you get that?
Yeah, okay, thank you, yeah, yeah, I have no objections.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Walker. All right, Item four-point three, Acceptance of Funds Community Schools Grant. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes superintendent to accept funds from the U.S. Department of Education Office of Elementary and Secondary Education Community Schools Grant in the amount of two million one hundred and four, four hundred and eighty-two, ending in June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so moved and properly second. Superintendent?
Thank you. Just as background, the Full Service Community Schools Program is authorized under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. This is a new contract or new funds being received to provide support for the planning, the implementation, and the operation of Full Service Community Schools that improve the coordination, integration, accessibility, and effectiveness of the supports that we provide for our students and families. These are specific funds for MD Fox, Burr, Buckley High School for a duration of five years, and the schools were identified as a way of having a comparable way to access services in the south end of Hartford. As for the north end of Hartford, we will continue to support schools there through the ASCEND Pipeline Resources that support the five schools there, right, Milner, Sean, Weaver, Wish, and MLK. Specifically, the funds will be used to enhance our system of supports, including expanding the in-school and out-of-school programs, increasing involvement for families and our community partners, and some of the outcomes that are expected are to increase access to our Tier Two and Tier Three student supports in and out of school, expanding the activities and programs that target development of competencies and transferable skills that are aligned to our academic curricula, and engaging in Tier Two, Tier Three students and their families in community activities that increase the involvement and the engagement for, of parents and caregivers in the education process, and then implementing a permanent Tier Three network approach that will include our district, a school administration, teachers, students and families, and our CBOs. There's also a through-line of professional development that will be available for the schools participating as well. I'll pause there with the amount being two, two million one hundred and four, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and this is, again, the funding source is, this is a federal grant from the Office, the U.S. Department of Ed, their Office of Elementary and Secondary Education. Back to you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Looking to my colleagues to see if there's any questions. I do see Board Member Brody, you have the floor. I do see Board Member Brody, you have the floor.
Okay. In committee, I don't remember the ASCEND pipeline being mentioned, because my question in committee for edification of everyone here and tuning in was the equity piece, because there's three specific schools. And I was trying to better understand if we're seeking a grant from the federal government, were we looking at it through an equitable lens, which we try to do in these cases. So I'm, so now my question would be with the ASCEND pipeline as a part of why we sought out to support some schools in the south end, does, is, are they coming online at the same time? Or is there a wait for the ASCEND? Because this is five years. So how similar would it be in that sense? And I don't know if anyone can answer that.
So I know that Chief Blackburn is here, so she can, I'll ask her to join us at the mic. The grant period is 2024 to 2028, and these schools will, there will not be a waiting period for these new schools, Ms. Brody. They will start now that the grant, hopefully, if the grant funds are accepted. Chief Blackburn.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. And thank you so much, Board members, for moving this item. Truly appreciated. So during the committee of the whole, we did have great dialogue and conversation in regards to the community school work. And as we know, that community school work has been going on in our district for several years. And in regards to the North Hartford ASCEND pipeline, Ms. Brody, the North Hartford ASCEND pipeline was written, Hartford Public Schools were a part of that. And they build a lot of that grant in looking at the work being done at five of our full-service community schools in the north end. So the question of equity, I think it's a valid one, is we are continuing to move through this budget cycle, wanting to make sure that schools are continued to be supported, as well as CBOs, making sure that they can continue their work. So the idea of looking at these three schools in the south end was really to look at how are we going to, more or less, look to continue to codify the work that we are doing. So the mention of the ASCEND pipeline is just to lift up that there are five schools in the north end that we've kind of started that process with, and Hartford Public Schools being a part of the North Hartford ASCEND partnership. And now trying to see how can we replicate some of those pieces in the south end in these three schools. Those are feeder schools. MD Fox, those students would then move to Burr. The students from Burr would then move to Buckley. So when they opened this federal grant, we were like, what an opportunity to apply for that, as North Hartford ASCEND really is focused in on the North Hartford area.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Board Member Brody.
So I'm trying to understand, because we, we don't get like the ASCEND pipeline, they, we don't get like the meat of, I, I don't know what funding and all of those things. So I can only, I just have to imagine that they are getting some support. So maybe it will be helpful if we get that. So then this wouldn't seem isolated. It would just be complimentary. But now it doesn't seem like it goes together. It just seems like we sought a, a grant for specific schools, and we know that there's support, support needed for all schools. And right now, we're talking north-south, but I don't know if anyone else. I got a nice email from some CBOs at Hartford High on what they think they're going to be lacking in the budget process. So everyone's looking like my school, my community, and wanting to continue the great work that they're doing. So I think it would be helpful if we knew more about the North Hartford ASCEND pipeline.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you so much. So thank you again, Ms. Brody. I think what you're raising is a layered question, that the North Hartford ASCEND pipeline, we did come and the grant was accepted here. I know in our Family and Community Engagement Committee, we've had opportunity to look at the various pieces of the North Hartford ASCEND pipeline. But I do think it would be fitting to revisit that. So I think point well taken. But also want to just separate that we do have a fiscal component overall, because in Hartford, all of our schools are community schools using this leveled approach. So I think the equity piece that you're raising is definitely germane and totally understand where you're coming from. And really wanted to highlight that the North Hartford piece, yes, we can give another update and report. A lot of work is going on in those schools. Family Navigator is working through several community-based agencies. So just want to say, agree. And I think that can be done. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, if it could, or Madam Superintendent, if it could include monies so we can quantify that part of the North Hartford ASCEND.
Yes, Superintendent will like to elaborate, and then we're going to let Board Member Walker have a, have his time.
Thank you. I was actually kind of leaning in and saying, can you just give me an opportunity to clarify the request? And so just understanding that it's the ASCEND pipeline, the resources and the programmatic supports and the investments for the ASCEND pipeline schools. Did I capture that correctly? Thank you.
Board Member Walker.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you recognized me. So my question is directed towards Chief Blackburn, if she's still at the, the mic.
She is.
Okay. So Chief Blackburn, since our committee meeting, I've had questions from a person or two after reading through this, trying to understand the breakdown of the funding. And so I want to ask you about this kind of the cost analysis and the budget. I think the question I got was, it looked like as they were reading it, that all the money for this grant is going to fund management positions within the Hartford Public Schools Central Office, i.e. Chief, Chief of FCE, Community Schools Manager, and Community Partners Manager, et cetera. Now, would you clarify this? Because the way I'm reading this, right, the district is committed to paying the salary for the three HPS positions that are currently listed under non-federal funds, as well as the facilities funds. Now, under the budget, there is three staff to be hired over that five-year period of time. I guess when we had this discussion, I had a belief that these three staff would be staff that would be working at the school sites, or, you know, school-based staff. Would you clarify, like, one, that the funding for the central office positions are, are separate from the $2 million? And two, to identify these three staff that will be funded by the budget, and where these three staff will be located and kind of what their duties will be?
Yes. Yep, she, she's going to respond in just a moment. Chief Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yes, we did provide from the question we received at the Committee of the Whole, the breakdown of the budget. And I just want to make sure, can you hear me, Board Member Walker?
I can hear you well enough, yes.
Okay. So we provided that breakdown, and hopefully that was shared with the full board. And in the budget breakdown, you will notice that there is a matching component. So some of my time has to be dedicated to this grant. So I'm written there, not that I'll be paid through the grant, but that is matching. So that is a piece that had to be done based on stipulations from the federal government. The community school's manager, much the same, a portion of her salary will be coming out of the grant. But again, some of that will be matching based on the stipulations of the federal government grant. The integrated coordinator positions, they will report directly into a central office supervisor, but will be based in a school. So a portion of their time, they will be at central office, a portion of their time, they will be in a school building. The grant was written that way, to your point, very specifically, so they can be at MD Fox, be at Burr, be at Buckley, working with the staff there. So that is how the positions are broken up in this particular grant.
Okay. A quick follow-up. So what is, what is that position called again, just to be clear?
That position, and I want to read it so I can get it right. Just give me one moment. So the Integrated Support Coordinator, they will lead the planning, work with the MTSS folks in the building to ensure that there's curriculum alignment between the school day and extended day activities. They will also work with school-based staff to look at the social-emotional-behavioral components, connect with college and career readiness, and also providing, like being that bridge to have information passing back and forth between school-based departments, as well as working with the community school directors, and of course, our family and community service support providers. Their role as that integrated support coordinator is to be ensuring that the students that we're working with, the families that we're working with, that their needs are being met. And we've had this conversation, all of us before, that it's actually, I don't want to use the word track, but I don't have a better word right now, that it's tracked, that it's codified, that we are collecting the data, so we are able to see what improvements are being made by the Integrated Service Coordinator.
Okay. So if you indulge me, Mr. Chair, so do you have a sense of, are there going to be like 70/30 schools, a central office, or 80/20? How do you envision this? And the reason I'm asking to be clear here, because to me, what came at me almost like with Jess, you know, with some frustration, is, is there's a reading in this that sounds like central office is going to go by three staffs, and the school will see nothing. And so when you talk like $2 million, I think people want to get a real clear sense that most of that $2 million, and the energy behind that $2 million will actually be spent benefiting the school. And so that's why I'm trying to get real clear on the record. How much time do you think that person is really going to spend dealing with school issues? You know, the, the ones you've mentioned?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm not precise, but 80/20, 70/30, what do you think, Chief Blackburn?
We, we got it. Thank you so much.
Point of, point of order, what's the specific question?
That is a specific question. That, right now, there's a way in which you can read this that says, well, Chief Blackburn has, has added three people to her staff, these three roles. And so the grant is written as if it's going to benefit the three schools. And that, that will happen if those three positions are really school-based and really working with the schools. Because the, the goal of the grant is to really improve the outcome for students, which can only happen if you're really doing the work at the school.
Appreciate it. I think-
And not at central office.
Your, your point, you, I, I believe I understand your question. Chief Blackburn, can you elaborate very clearly if these three staff are going to be working in your office or working directly in the school?
Absolutely, and thank you. And Board Member Walker, I understand your passion. However, the staff members do need to report somewhere. They have to have oversight. They will need professional development. And so they will report into our office. So given the breakdown that you have described, I would say it would be 80/20. So 80% of their time will be in a school building, as much of our staff, like our FCSSPs, the majority of their time is spent in a school building. But they do report into central office as well, and the principal. So my response would be 80/20, because they do require oversight. And again, this particular grant is federally funded and directed. And there were very specific pieces that we had to adhere to in regards to how it was written. And so having staff connected to central office, as well as the majority of their time pushed into a school, had to be present.
Thank you. I appreciate your response, and that sounds positive. I'm, I'm not making, trying to make them pure school, but I, I want to get on the record that they're really going to be a school-based, as just as an FS, P.
FCSSP, that's all right.
I missed the word salad there.
No prob.
But, but you know, the, the, the family community services specialist person. So, okay, so you're thinking their, their, their work profile will kind of mirror that in terms of how directly they engage with the school versus how often they engage with central office?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chair. The work of the integrated coordinator will be different than the FCSSP? The setup and the reporting structure will be similar?
Yes, understood, understood. Okay. I, I'll, that satisfies that, that question. But I just wanted to have it clear that this person is really going to be a school-based staff.
We understand.
Even though they report to you, most of their time is right there in the school.
Thank you so much, Mr. Walker, for your clarification. Dr. Schmerle?
I am vaguely familiar with the ASCEND pipeline grant, which was also from the Department of Education, that has very stringent requirements. When you apply for it, and then reporting requirements, I don't have the expertise to know where an individual employee should be and what percentage of their time should be spent. The objective, at least for the ASCEND pipeline, and I would imagine it's the same here, is the board, is to ensure that the metrics that we agree to are met. How they get met is really the prerogative, I think, of the administration to get that done. I'm interested in results. And if a person is 30% here and 40% there, I can't tell you if that's right or not. I want to know how we're doing based on the objectives that we set with the grant. And I think that's what should be reported back to the board. So I think this is a very well-written grant, and I just want to go on the record supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schmerle. Any other questions from my colleagues? Not seeing any. Thank you so much, Chief Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Member Schmerle. We did receive a perfect score on this grant, so thank you. I had to add that to the record. Excuse me.
Awesome. Not seeing any other questions or comments. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to accept funds from the U.S. Department of Education Office of Elementary and Secondary Education Community Schools Grant in the amount of $2,104,482, ending June 30th, 2028. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Any extensions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. Thank you so much, Superintendent. Thank you so much, Chief Blackburn. Now moving on to item 4.1, Contract Approval Partners for Educational Leadership. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Partners for Education Leadership for the term outlined in contract, ending June 30th, 2024, at a cost not to exceed $110,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Superintendent?
Thank you. I'll offer some background, and I know that we have our team here, as well as Richard Lemmons from PEL. So the, with the expansion of our Leadership Development Pipeline Programs, we are requesting approval to partner once again with PEL to support the development and the implementation of an Assistant Principal Pipeline Program. This is for staff that already has a 092 Administrator Certification and their teaching certification. And it offers an opportunity for them to grow and develop into highly effective leaders in HPS. The PEL is a nonprofit organization, and they have a very specific mission to partner with education leaders to reimagine teaching and learning, and specifically dismantling instructional inequities. The context of this contract is that we want to build a sustainable talent pipeline, which was feedback we received specifically from the board, as we were thinking as to how to invest as our resources now to set us up for the future. And so this is an opportunity for us to support our educators, teacher leaders, develop a pipeline so that we have robust professional learning and job-embedded opportunities for about 12 to 15 aspiring leaders. Specifically, the scope of services and the cost structure for the $110,000 include four key components. It's the, the initial kickoff in the summertime so that the, the group can begin to establish themselves and build their community as a, as a community of learners. The design and the facilitation of the monthly learning sessions, we will have two PEL partners supporting, planning, preparing, facilitating, and assessing the, the sessions, as well as the coaching- supporting, planning, preparing, facilitating, and assessing the sessions, as well as the coaching component, five coaching sessions during the program, and there is, by the way, a cost savings here. There will be cost savings due to a credit that we had from the last time that we had the contract with PEL of $5,000, and then, PEL is also providing $15,000 of in-kind contribution. So, on average, the cost is about $9,100 per participant. And then, when we compare that to other school leadership preparation programs, the cost is about $31,000. Essentially, what we want to have is a program moving forward that we can implement on our own. In terms of, we've had questions before about ensuring that these investments remain in the district, and so, all of the participants will sign a promissory note and agree to stay in the district for a minimum of two years after the completion of the program. And of course, if they leave, they will have to pay back the amount, and so this is actually a standard practice that we've used for other professional learning opportunities, including the Hartford Principal Leadership Academy. I will pause there and see if there are any additional questions. We have our team here.
Looking to my colleagues, I believe I see Board Member Walkers, and you have the floor, Board Member Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is directed to the team, I think I asked the committee to confirm that we are currently using PEL, or it was reported you're using PEL for development of principal-level administrators, is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, then, I made the recommendation then that we try to find a way to offset this expenditure of $110,000. Although it's not dramatic, it's money that could be changed, you know, it could be beneficial to schools in other ways. But I'm asking recommending that we use the PEL, the principals, and develop your, train the trainers through that, and then use them to do this kind of programming, instead of bringing PEL. Again, it appears that we're paying for the same program twice, once for principals and second time for assistant principals. And it feels like, if I'm just trying to be creative with saving money, this would be an opportunity to challenge the district leadership to think about saving money in this kind of way. Is there a response from the team?
I don't see a team, but I do see the superintendent.
Yes, and I'll ask Assistant Superintendent of Professional Learning and Multilingual Services, Ms. Torres Hill, to speak to, and Richard Lemmons who's here, to speak to how this differs. Right, we are talking about two very completely different roles, the role of the assistant principal and the role of the school leader. And so, if you can speak to that, and the commitment that we have to establish a solid foundation this year, leveraging the SR fundings that are aspiring, and then, you know, being able to carry it over in years to come.
Can you hear me okay? Everybody can hear me okay? Yes, thank you. Thank you, Board Member Walker, thank you for the question. And as, as you know, we've already established in existence right now, a Hartford Principal Leadership Academy, and that is an aspiring leadership academy for current assistant principals and district leaders who are aspiring to become principals, and as we mentioned, that is a very distinct set of skills that we are developing in that academy. We have two PEL facilitators supporting us with that work. And when we launched and marketed that program, we saw a, quite a bit of interest for our aspiring assistant principal leadership program. We had about 12 to 13 teacher leaders, coaches in the district who were really interested in developing their skills and taking their their next level, right? They wanted to level up in terms of their professional learning and growth. And so, we wanted to respond to that need, and we know that developing the skills of teacher leaders and coaches is a very distinct, right, and very different than folks who are already in leadership positions, which is what's currently happening with our HPLA Academy. So, this session that we are looking to develop will be somewhat similar, but the idea is to, with the support of PEL, to help us develop skills and competencies that will help these teacher leaders take on their first roles as leaders. Although they may have the 092 certification, they are currently not utilizing it. And so, this is a very distinct set of skills that are different than if you are already an existing leader, number one. And what we'd like to do, secondly, is to take this first year, right, and use our in-house leaders from the academies to build future, right, academies. So, although we may not use PEL in the future, we do want to use this as a foundation, right, to develop a strong cohort for both aspiring principals and for our principals so that it can be replicated in future years without needing the contract. But then, we will grow our own, and as I mentioned in, in our committee, we are having, we have the privilege of having our own curriculum that we're building with PEL that will be Hartford-owned, so therefore, we can replicate that, and as we build our leaders, those leaders will then help us to develop those future cohorts of leaders in years to come.
Thank you for that feedback, and I, I would still challenge us to try to find a way to use our existing professional development funding, try to find some other method. I do support, though, doing this program, because we do, we do need to develop our staff, and I do support this idea of you building internal capacity so that you can train the trainers internally. But I'm just challenging the point that we're talking about freezing across the whole district, hiring anyone, and it just feels like everyone could take some method to try to find some savings where we can. And this feels like the opportunity to find some savings.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Dr. Schmerling?
You mentioned, develop our own curriculum with the assistance of this consulting group. Are we going to license or copyright those?
In terms of licensing and copywriting it for our use in district, is that what I heard, understood the question?
Certainly for our use, but I'm wondering if it's copyrighted and it's effective. It might be something that we want to sell across the country as a best case, and how you develop a career model to have assistant principals trained. If this doesn't exist around the country, we may have something that's marketable.
And we certainly are, thank you for that feedback, we are certainly looking to be a model. And I know that this is something that is happening across the country, but not so much here in Connecticut. And, you know, we do have PEL here, we can speak to some of the work that they have done across, and why we could be a trailblazer in this field, for sure, so thank you.
Board Member Brody?
Thank you. A lot of my questions were answered in committee. I was questioned about this in a community meeting, and I kind of felt like I was working for PEL. But, because I had to defend what I thought was good, right? But, in this training, because as a district, are we specific in what an assistant principal does? Like, through my personal experience, it seems like they deal with discipline in certain other things, but does it extend to, like, do they do evaluations of teachers? Like, but I know it's heavy on discipline, so if it's heavy on discipline, I'm hoping, because we heard from our student representatives earlier, so I'm hoping that empathy, like, that kind of touched me when they said that, because if you're going to school where you, with certain parents, you gotta go, and you have to be in that space, that empathy. Like, some children may come to school just to receive that, because they receive it nowhere else. So, I'm hoping in this training that we are on that piece, because it seems like when some may write in school, the assistant principal is the one that's reaching out to parents. So, that, that, that part of the training would be very important to make sure we're leveraging that.
Board Chairman, may I respond?
Yes.
Thank you. So, thank you for that, Board Member Brody, and I would love to just comment a little bit more on how we have developed some of the sessions and are thinking through what this could look like for assistant principals. So, we have developed an Advisory Council, it's the Leadership Development Advisory Council, that's exactly the title, LDAC, who, the membership consists of current building leaders, central office leaders, to really think through what are the competencies, the skills, the knowledge, the dispositions of our principals, when we were talking about our Principal Academy, and now we're going to be doing a similar activity, trying to unpack what does that look like for assistant principals, what are the similarities, and what are the differences? And through that, we have developed a Hartford prince, like portrait of a principal, and we will be doing the same thing for an assistant principal. Out of that portrait comes our professional learning topics. And to your point, we are creating topics that are coming right out of those dispositions that we're naming, the characteristics of what does it mean to be an equity-driven leader, what does it mean to have communication? What does it mean, right, to think through instructional leadership? And so, some of those topics, such as emotional intelligence, when I was just listening to you, that's exactly what came to my, my mind. What we're developing here are different topics that are centered around what it means to be a Hartford leader. Because what's different, and I heard that come out in committee, is that when you're in an 092 program, you're learning how to be a leader, right, and you're walking and you're graduating out of that program with that certification. Yes, you come into this academy with that knowledge, but we are growing you to become a Hartford leader. So, what does it mean to work with budget? What does it mean to look at your PSEA? What does it mean to look at staffing? Right, and we also bring in current leadership so that they could see, right, what it means to be, if I'm aspiring to be a principal, I'm hearing from a principal in Hartford, if I'm aspiring to be an AP, I'm hearing from that. What does it mean in theory, and what does it mean on the ground? So that they're really getting a robust learning experience, so that when they graduate after their 10 sessions and their capstone, they are Hartford-ready. So, we want to take in all of those pieces that you're naming from the committee, from the leaders themselves, and we are designing a really great program to make it beneficial for them.
Board Member Francois?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for that explanation. One question I have is, are you going to be incorporating cultural competency in this, and what does that look like?
If I may, I would love to have Richard Lemmons talk a little bit more about the facilitation of our professional learning.
Thank you for having me this, thank you for having me this evening. Partners is honored to always have an opportunity to work with Hartford Public Schools. We had a relationship that goes back almost to the beginning of our existence, a quarter of a century ago. In, it's hard, so the priorities for what will determine the curriculum of this program are yet to be shaped. That committee is going to shape that. It's hard for me to imagine that cultural competency won't be at the centerpiece of that. We know that the capacity of educators to reach across cultural boundaries is essential for quality in classrooms, quality in schools. We actually put forth a multiracial facilitation team, in part because of that, who have facilitation, have expertise in facilitation, expertise in leadership development, and expertise in leading schools going back decades. And we put those two individuals together for the principal support program, and we also were hoping that those same two, to keep the coherence, could also work with the aspiring assistant principal program. But we have, it's hard for me to imagine it couldn't be just centered in the entire piece.
Thank you so much. I have one more question, a follow-up question. Will you be working with community, I would say, not community organizers, but I would say, service providers, community service providers, and familiarizing the individuals who are going to be in this cohort program with the services that they provide so that they can help the students with certain needs or certain situations, so that it's not foreign to them?
May I ask a follow-up? Is this a question, will the service providers be a part of it, professional learning? Or is it the professional learning being provided to them?
Okay, so not the service providers being part of this, but having the individuals who are part of the cohort. Will they be briefed, or not necessarily briefed, but will they be given information? Okay, if this student has, or if this group of students has issues with this particular need, or if they have a specific need, this community service provider over here can assist, or can facilitate, or has had a relationship with this group of students or this particular issue. Does that make sense?
This makes complete sense, thank you for clarifying. And yes, you know, as we mentioned, there are different pieces of our portrait of a Hartford leader that we are unpacking with our cohort, and one of them, when you were talking, came to mind, and it was about effective communication, and in within that bucket, if you will, there is a lot around community partnerships and school community, outside the community, within the community, and so, we unpack that, not only with our PEL facilitators, but like I mentioned, with some of our own Hartford leaders who come in, and we bring in guest speakers so that they could really contextualize what they're learning and make it connected to Hartford's environment and context so that they can begin to make sense of just how this all fits together and coheres, as Richard mentioned. So, this is a design, remember, we are new to all this, so this feedback is really, really great because it provides us with some more thinking to do in our committee to make sure that we are hitting all those parts, so thank you.
Thank you, I have one more question.
Final question, Ms.?
Thank you so much. So, being that it's a assistant principal pipeline program, oftentimes, as an educator, oftentimes, I will see that the assistant principal has to step up and assume that principal role, because the the actual principal may have to leave the building, or something may happen, or they might need to be pulled to another area for whatever reason. So, although you're preparing them to be an assistant principal, are you going to give them those leadership skills where, or strategies, or tools that they can take with them so that, should they have to move into an unexpected leadership role as principal, they'll be prepared? And also, it's a two-part, will they be prepared to, if they need to move to another school, say, a Montessori school? Will they be given the, kind of like briefed on the pedagogy, if you will, so that they can not be like a fish in the desert?
Thank you, thank you for that. I'll answer your first question. And yes, it's interesting that you should mention that when we were, you know, thinking through the portrait of a Hartford principal, when we brought it to discussion in committee about the aspiring assistant principals, we wondered if it should look different, and the three principals on our committee were like, no, for that exact reason, we need to develop them very similar to some of the skills of our principals so that in case they're ready to lead, right, in the event that they need to do that in an interim basis and a more permanent basis. So, a lot of the skills are similar, although there are some very distinct features given the roles, right? And so, we are developing with those portrait of a principal characteristics in both academies with very distinct features. The second part of your question is, yes, we want to make sure that we're bringing in folks from the different themed schools, Montessori, even dual-language academy, right, so that people understand the different programs that we have in Hartford. That's what I love about this, is that it's specific to the Hartford context. So, right now, we're rotating So right now, we're rotating a lot of folks in our, in our principal one, and so we're looking at what's working here and what's not, if, if anything is not, so that we can adjust course, so that we can make sure that our assistant principal, make sure our program has all those components. So my answer to that is, yeah, we will be incorporating how we can engage every one type of themed school in within our design so that folks can get an understanding of who we are as a district and what our different offerings are for our families as well.
My only comment would be is somewhat to the Hartford Police Department, where we spent all this money to train officers and, you know, a year later, they're in Glastonbury, Simsbury with all of our training. You know, and this may not be a, a you particular question, but, you know, is there any safety of retaining any of our talent that we have, that we have trained, and we're just not training them? I believe in opportunity, and I believe folks should go where there's opportunity, but I just also want to ensure that we keep good talent, that we're trying to home-grow. And I guess that's a superintendent question of how to make that work, but I, I just don't want to lose any more good talent and good people to other districts that we have trained.
Duly noted, and I think this is a, this is a two, three-pronged approach, which we're investing now as a retention measure for those teacher leaders that are eager and, and hungry, if you will, for, for their development and growth. And then we have to think about what the retention looks like post. When they do assume the leadership opportunities that we have, right? That means that we have to have a wraparound support for leaders to feel that they have the agency and that they're empowered and that they can be successful. So it's not just a one-time investment, if you will, right? It is a progression that we have to continue to, to build toward. Totally agree.
Okay. Ma'am, we are moving forward. We are moving forward. Make it quick, please.
Thank you so much. I just have one more question. And this is about Montessori. Now, to have a Montessori, a, a principal of a Montessori school, public Montessori school, it helps if the, if the principal or assistant principal, if they are Montessori-trained. So since there's a Montessori Training Center, right around the corner, pretty much, who has training, who had, who provides training, is there a possibility, or is there something that you can possibly explore where, when you're doing your cohort, if there can be training provided to maybe one or few of the candidates so that they can become Montessori-trained? So should they become an administrator in a Montessori, public Montessori program, that they will be able to really understand what children are doing, what teachers are doing, what the real pedagogy is? Because it's very different from someone who doesn't have the training, and it's hard to see through that lens.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Partners for Educational Leadership for the term outlined in the contract ending in June 30th, 2024, at a cost not to exceed $110,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays?
One aye.
Noted. Any abstentions? I believe the ayes have it. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for coming, and appreciate and look forward to working with you. Item 4.2, which is now item 4.3, but we'll move forward. Contract Amendment Approval Hartford Knights for Milner. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Hartford Knights for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th, 2024, at a cost not to exceed $75,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly. Second, Superintendent.
Thank you. Last year, through several grants, the Hartford Knights Youth Organization provided after-school cheer and culinary enrichment programming that supported students at Milner Middle. And so we are, they are back and proposing to provide enrichment opportunities to students. If you see, there are two components to this request here tonight. One is for the Life Skills Enrichment Program on Saturdays, and then the other one is for the after-school programming. And essentially, there are opportunities for, um, the, the grant supports our priorities in two ways. One is to engage our families and caregivers and community partners, as well as to support with the creation of a welcoming culture, nurturing climate via student engagement opportunities, which is why, if you notice in the metrics, both average daily attendance and chronic absenteeism were added as metrics for this contract. The partners here hope to change the lives of our young people by merging education, athletic programming, life skills development, mentoring, health and wellness, all within a safe and nurturing environment. And so I'll pause there. And wait, we just want to note is that the funding, there's a braiding of, of funding here. The Scaling Equity Innovation Grant, which is through our ESAR fund, so 40,000, and then the remaining 35 is through the State-Based School Improvement Grant.
Thank you, Superintendent. Looking to my colleagues to see if there are any questions. I see that we have Mr. Bernard Thomas and Principal Leonardo Watson. I see Board Member Walker with his hand raised. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'll direct it to Superintendent or representative of the program. I like the program. Program actually sounds like a terrific program. As I'm reading through the details, you're, you're working with 10 students on one program, and then you're working with 20, 25 students on another program. Again, I'm trying to look to challenge ourselves in terms of use of funds. Is there an opportunity, even if we approve this program tonight, is there a way that somehow teachers in schools can also be given incentive to do the same type of work? This feels like the type of work that resource teachers do in many of our schools already. And, um, and that would be my only question. I mean, the program obviously is a good program. I'm just challenging, um, the need of a third-party company to do what I, what it feels like resource teachers and others are able to do within our parent community school structure.
Um, Mr. Walker, thank you for that question. Um, just, um, overall, uh, we do work with more students than what the numbers signify, 10 to 15 students. I do agree that, you know, some of the work with some of the personnel that we do have in our schools should be carried on. And I think what we're trying to do here is extension of those services, but also bring in professionals from our community that can instill, you know, great values, you know, in our students. You know, it's a, it's, it's a multi, multifaceted approach, where we do so much on the school side. And this, this is additional hours. You know, one of the programs is enrichment program, 3:30 to 6:00. And fortunately, you know, um, our board, you know, have transportation for our kids at 6 o'clock, so they can access this program. Our Saturday program also does involve some of our school team members. Our social worker is a part of the program. Our SCS is a part of the program. So we are utilizing our staff as well. But we found it really critical that we also involve some of our community members that Mr. Thomas, you know, organization that I've worked with over the years, you know, have proven skills that have really, you know, created positive outlook for our students.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, thanks, Principal Watson?
Yes.
Yeah, and so then I, I would invite you to kind of draw that picture out in the future, showing the work done within the school and showing how this is an extension that kind of extends the reach and the impact of what you're currently doing with students. It, it just strengthens to me the why we are doing this. Could certainly a good program as, as defined, that it's, that it's extending the work that you're currently doing in the school and involving your school staff is good to hear. There's certainly a question that I have.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Looking to my colleagues, any questions? Yes, Board Member Brody.
It's not in the packet tonight, but I did see it in regards to, I questioned the, um, I guess it will, it was maybe labeled as overhead. I thought it was a substantial amount. And being that the overhead is that much, I'm hoping to Mr. Board Member Walker's point that we are reaching more students than what was referenced. Because if that amount of money is going for overhead, it should be to support a larger number of students than what's showing, shown here. That's it.
Thank you, Board Member Brody. Uh, looking to my colleagues, not seeing, uh, is that, Mr. Thomas, would you like to have a word?
Yes, I understand, um, um, Mrs. Brody's question, especially about overhead, but we are talking 18.6%. Our standard is normal, is 18% and stuff like that. But there's also another piece that Ms. Brody doesn't understand what we bring to the school. Hartford Knights also brings an additional $48,000, not only to Milner, not only to Sand, not only to Rossin, and will currently be bringing it to MLK. These are funds that the Hartford Knights goes out to bring to additional funds to help support the, uh, the Hartford Public Schools, uh, system and what we can bring to the children. So even though that 0.6% might seem a little extreme or a little much to you, considering everything we do, it doesn't even scratch the surface, but I appreciate that.
Board Member Brody.
Yes, in every 48,000 that reaches our schools, we are very grateful for that. But what's before us tonight is this particular contract. So that's, that's the only thing that's in question tonight. And it is not my responsibility to know all that you do. That's the responsibility of someone else to make sure board members know. Thank you.
I understand. I understand. It's not your responsibility. I was just letting you know that, that's some of the extra stuff that we do, and that's what we try to do. It's in the community to make sure that we bring as much resources as possible to the students in Hartford for what we serve. We believe that they deserve every bit of it and every dollar that we can bring to them. We try to. Thank you.
Much appreciated.
The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Hartford Knights for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th, 2024, at a cost not to exceed $75,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Thank you, uh, Mr. Watson, and thank you, uh, Mr. Thomas. Really love the work that you all are doing at Milner School, and I hope this is an addition to the great quality of stuff that you have going on here. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Have a very busy night, guys.
Okay.
Pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 4.4, Second Reading and Adoption Policy 5111, Administ- Admission slash Placement. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education adopt policy 5111, Admission Placement. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly. Second, I will take this one here as the policy chair. Our policy committee, committee needed to adjust the admissions policy to reflect recent legislative changes from PA 23208, requiring a kindergarten student to be five years old by September 1st of the enrolling year. There is new information also related to ensuring students who experience housing insecurity are able to participate in regular schooling, enrolling students returning from juvenile detention, and schools operated by the Department of Children and Families. The age and process of withdrawal was also revised due to legislation changes requiring students to undergo a review of optional programs for family members and school staff prior to withdrawal, prior to withdrawal. Are there any questions and comments on this policy? Yes, Ms. Brody.
So we talked about this, um, a while ago. So I need help understanding the disconnect with families and what they're experiencing. And I need to, um, better understand that because we've talked about, um, this months and months and months back. And through that conversation, um, families were at the center of that and how we need to get in front of it and all of those things. So I'm trying to figure out what happened.
Deputy Foster.
Just a clarification. Are you referring to the kindergarten piece in particular?
Yes.
So I, I do think, I, I mean, I can't speak to specific cases in terms of particular disconnects. We have had a communications plan in terms of the case this evening. You know, we'd have to get into the specifics of that, obviously, but we have had a robust communications plan that's gone out to all of our current families. We've also communicated with early childhood partners around the city about what our process is for the waiver, because we do have the waiver process for somebody who's pre-K4, who hasn't met the birthday deadline, apply for the waiver. And then we have a, a process by which we determine whether they're eligible to move into kindergarten or not. So without knowing, going into specific cases, we, we have communicated widely, and we've communicated directly through our schools as well in terms of having our pre-K teachers having conversations with families. We, really, the first big conversation was in the January parent-teacher conferences with every family who was at the parent-teacher conference.
Superintendent.
I also want to add, um, in terms of timeline, that we were, we and districts across the state were waiting for additional, um, guidance from the State Department of Education. And those conversations actually happened all, almost through, uh, late in the fall of this school year. There were a lot of conversations about what should the assessment look like? You know, making sure that assessments, um, were not excluding our most marginalized families, which is why we decided to go the way in which we did, unlike other districts that are leaving it up to educators to make the decisions. And so it wasn't until the beginning of the year, if you will, along with other districts, that we began to roll out the communication, even though we knew that legislation had passed, uh, right, a year before. It just, it wasn't fully articulated at the state level from an operational perspective.
Can I ask a more clarifying question? Or a more specific question? So just like I always say about our, we, we, we have so much that we do in Hartford Public Schools that to think, um, or dream that we could reach out and get the students that we know we need to reach out to those families before they even come to Hartford Public Schools. Because we know what comes into Hartford Public Schools, but we have our own set of, um, issues that we're dealing with. But we know just from our absentee data that the very little people that have the very high rates of absenteeism aren't responsible for getting themselves to school. So we know someone is not getting them to school. I would think from learning that, we would know these same families who aren't getting their kids to school as much as we would love for them to get them to school, that we have to find them where they are to have them know this information. Like, we, we can't even afford to just host a meeting and expect people to show up. Not on critical items. Like, we can't even afford to just host a meeting and expect people to show up, not on critical items like this. We have to go find them or connect with the people who are in touch with them. So if we reached out to the early childcare providers, we have to do, like, we have to have a real relationship. Like, this is, are you holding events? Like, we have to be aware of it because guess what happens? They show up here and the plan that we came up with that was just described, it doesn't seem like we've done that because we had just a couple parents at a meeting that was referenced. So we have to figure out a way that we're getting into the community and not like soft engagement with community groups. And we have to really do engagement. And if we're never, if we're not committed to that, we're not committed to anything. Because we have, the ones that need us the most are the ones we have to go out and find and get or at least be connected to the people that are out there. We have, we have to, I think we could do a little bit better with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Brody. Any other questions regarding this policy, any other concerns? Okay. The motion on the floor, let me make sure I get it proper, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education adopt policy five one one, admission slash placement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Ayes have it, the motion moves. Thank you all so much for that. Is there a motion to enter? Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah. Is there a motion to make, put consent into one item?
No, Mr. Chair, I have one objection there.
Point of order.
Yeah, thank you, go ahead.
Mr. Chair entertained a motion, so I move.
Yes, I am, as it's phrased, I would recommend phrasing it, is there an objection to taking it? And so if I didn't have an objection, we'd take the motion and go ahead and pass it. I'm just raising that I have an objection to taking it as one.
Okay. Mr. Walker, which item would you like to take out of consent agenda? Mr. Walker, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I was struggling to hear you. Could you repeat it one more time?
Which item would you like to take out of the consent agenda?
Okay, just the one item, believe it's five point one about the, hang on a second. The appointment of the impartial hearing board. I realize I have at least a question, a clarification out of that, so that's the, that's the only one.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Give me one moment. Attorney Mazerick, can I just see you for a moment, please? Thank you, Attorney Mazerick. My apologies. Just want to make sure we do the public business properly. So, Mr. Walker, I'm going to entertain a motion to move five point one onto the business agenda, and we're going to take it up so you can ask all the questions that you would like. Is there a motion to move five point one, appointment of impartial hearing board to the business agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in properly. Second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? All right. We'll now move on to agenda item five point one of impartial hearing, impartial hearing board. I'm drawing a blank. Do I need a motion to entertain it? But I will move forward properly just to do so. Yes. Is there a motion to? Motion to? Where is it? Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes superintendent to appoint Gordon Reese Scully, Men Schkani attorneys, Cullen Gil Martin, Aubrey Batchley, Regine O'Malley, and Crystal Cook as impartial hearing officers for the purposes of accommodation hearings and findings pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, section ten dash one eighty-six B. All in favor, please say aye. I mean, superintendent, please forgive me.
Yeah, so moved.
No, it didn't need a vote. My apologies.
Yes, and I'm going to ask Attorney Wilson to give us a overview of the statute requirement and why we need the capacity.
Good after, good evening, board members. So essentially, this is the statute that provides the framework in which a family that does not live in Hartford can request a hearing of the board or some component of the board to do an actual residency hearing to determine whether or not that student is in fact a resident of Hartford. So the.
Mr. Chair, I'm struggling to hear Attorney Wilson.
Got you. Appreciate you, Mr. Walker. Can you move closer to the microphone?
Absolutely.
Is that better, Mr. Walker?
That's better.
Okay.
Continue.
Sorry, Board Member Walker. So essentially, this statute ten dash one eighty-six is the statutory framework that provides how a family is provided a hearing by the board or some component of the board in a situation in which a student is not a resident of Hartford. So the ask is the appointment of the impartial hearing officer to actually conduct those hearings on behalf of the board. And I'm more than happy to answer any specific questions that you have on that, on that item.
Mr. Walker, do you have any other questions?
I think I heard, I think I heard partially what he said. My question is about the constitution of that impartial hearing board. Is I understand the statute, right, that when it's a residency issue, the school board can hear the, you know, appeal to a denial, or they can set up this impartial hearing board. My only question is, is I was looking at the constitution of that hearing board. It didn't appear that anyone from the hearing board is a Hartford resident. And while that seems to be allowable, I'm just one opposed question to us. Like, right now, as a school board, we represent residents of Hartford and we'd be Hartford residents. The impartial hearing board doesn't seem to have any residents from Hartford, or it doesn't say that it does. So my question would be, would it be advisable to have some residents at Hartford as part of the impartial hearing board in addition to the attorneys from the law firm?
Councilman Walker, Cullen Gil Martin from Gordon Reese. I myself was a ten-year resident of Hartford. I believe that all the attorneys that were presented live in the vicinity of Hartford. And also, our firm is currently building out space to move our entire firm to downtown Hartford, which includes over forty attorneys and over sixty employees that will be moving to Hartford in the near term.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, can you hear or you want to ask another question?
I would, yeah, I just couldn't hear. Could you repeat your response?
Yeah, yeah, can you just, you just got to move a little closer, brother, and speaking to the mic, there you go.
Sorry, no problem, no problem. Yeah, I myself was a resident of Hartford for over ten years. I now live in West Hartford. All of the attorneys that are on the proposed impartial hearing board live in the immediate vicinity. And we are, I think this is most important, we are in the process of building out space to move over forty attorneys and sixty employees to downtown Hartford.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good to hear that you will be moving to Hartford. Because, yeah, that didn't, looking at your prior locations, I didn't get that. And I guess, Mr. Chair, I'm just registering the opinion that, as I thought about it, I got uncomfortable with the optics that someone's going to be having their residency required challenged and having to prove they're a resident of Hartford when the people who are hearing it have no connection to Hartford. So if we're just going to use the attorneys, then, yeah, it would be, it would behoove us to have attorneys have some connection to Hartford. Working in Hartford sounds good, or having some other members that have connection to Hartford as part of the hearing board. I don't have an objection with the attorneys being part of the impartial hearing board, as they are probably skilled in the process.
Superintendent?
Attorney Wilson, do you, can you briefly share the process that precedes the hearing officer stepping in? And the role that our staff plays in that process?
Absolutely. So there's, there's two residency investigators throughout the school district. The residency investigator's job is primarily to investigate residency in cases where there's an allegation or concern that a student may not be a resident of Hartford. We shared out numbers in this space in the committee meeting. For the school year twenty-two, twenty-three, I want to say there was approximately over a hundred of those particular investigations, of which thirty-five were in the category of having students that were found after a residency investigation of not being residents of Hartford. So that would be the category of cases in which each of those families could have requested a hearing in front of the board. But in that space, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, those families, after getting the proper statutory notification, did register their children in the school district of residence. So if we go to the numbers for this current school year, I want to say we have upwards of a hundred and nine residency investigations that we've completed, and about fifty-three of those cases, after the investigation revealed that those students did not reside in Hartford. So for this particular school year already, those are fifty-three particular cases in which those families could have requested a hearing of this board. So that's the bucket of work that we're talking about, where we're talking about the board actually doing hearings in this space. This particular school year, there would have been less than, there's about less than five in the category of actually having the hearing request. I also will offer to the concern as it pertains to Mr. Walker about the members of the impartial hearing board not necessarily being residents of Hartford. We've actually done work around the statutory interpretation of that, but the internities that we've mentioned are all residents of Hartford County. But I certainly, we certainly appreciate the point, and the firm is looking to relocate to Hartford. I will add that this school district has done work with this firm in the past, so this is not a new law firm to Hartford in the school of Hartford Public Schools. But to further expand upon the superintendent's question, you know, after there's this determination that you're no longer or you're not a resident of Hartford Public Schools, you have a right to have this particular hearing. I will also like to add that the work we're talking about impacts other aspects of operation too, right? We talk a lot about our attendance work and the points of fidelity to attendance numbers. We, in this category of cases, it's probably, it's not shocking that in this category of cases, we also have students who, while they may not choose to immediately enroll in the next school, in the school district of which they reside in, they're not attending school here consistently either, right? So that's impacting our attendance numbers in terms of actually coming to school. And there obviously is also a cost associated with the education. So this is the statutory piece of what's doing our work as a school district and providing the mechanism in which we could actually bring those cases to resolution if the students are not in fact a resident of Hartford. Hopefully, Superintendent, that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you, Attorney Wilson. And, Mr. Chair, I, as I said, I had a couple questions. I just wanted to raise them here in the public space so they can be addressed and we'll go on the record kind of what the process is and what the requirement is in terms of residency. And it sounds like we're comfortable with the attorneys being residents of Hartford County and connected to the district in that way. So that concludes my questions.
Any other questions on this agenda item? All right. Let's go back and take this motion up. Give me one second. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorized the superintendent to appoint Gordon Reese Scully, Men Schkani attorneys, Cullen Gil Martin, Aubrey Batchley, Regine O'Malley, and Crystal Cook as impartial hearing officers for the purpose of accommodation hearings and findings pursuant to Connecticut general statute, section ten dash eighty-six, one eighty-six B. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. All right, we will now take up our consent agenda. Is there a motion to take up our consent agenda as one?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Yes, I got it. Thank you so much. Now, we will move to vote on our consent agenda. The remaining items, I mean, I presume that we took up, just did that. Okay.
Yeah, that's on, Mr. Chair, yeah, the question I have, so did, taking it up, did we approve it and taking it up? That's where I saw the question I had too.
Yeah, we, so. Let me just be clear. I'm going, I'm going to ask for a motion to take up, I mean, to vote on our consent agenda at this particular moment. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of moving on our consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Thank you all for bearing through the ugliness of a public meeting. Now, we will, is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in properly. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? Ayes have it. We will be taking with us into executive session Superintendent Leslie Torres Rodriguez, Attorney Mazerick, and Christina Santiago. Thank you all so much for attending our meeting and have a wonderful evening. Thank you all so much for attending our meeting, and have a wonderful evening. I know it's not over, but, yeah, I know everybody's going to leave.